At this time, we bring the State Department of Education regular meeting to order at 5:30 AM on Monday, April the 8th, 2024. Members present are King, David Jennifer, and Susan. And this time, we move on to the pledge allegiance by Mr. Congress.
Now, let's say a prayer first, please. Father, we ask that your Spirit come in this meeting. Father, then we open it with you here. We ask that you be with all our faculty, that you be with the staff, that you be with this body, Father, and help us with all the decisions that we have to make. We ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Salute, plead.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kenny. Okay, this time, we move on to our presentations. And we have a kind issued Technology Partner School Service Report brought to us by Mrs. Jenny Henson. Thank you, April, for her regards. She can't speak right now. She had a procedure. So she asked me to step in. We appreciate your partnership. Sure. We appreciate your partnership. Stigler's a wonderful partner school for us. I am, like she said, I'm Jenny Henson. I'm the current free ex, which is the Free Department Transition Services Specialist. Took me a long time to get to say that without messing up. And I'm going to be the Councilor Student Services Coordinator next year. So I'm going to get to work even more closely with Stigler. So the front page there is pretty self-explanatory, but it shows our total enrollment for 2023-24. And we're serving 121 students from our partner schools. And then it breaks it down in our different programs there. The high school students are in black and the adult students are in green. So we have adults in all of our programs. At the bottom of it, it shows the numbers. We have a 94% completion and retention rate. So we're proud of that. That's a great rate. Our positive placement is students who are employed, join the military, or continue their education. So maybe they went to OSU IT, or maybe they went to college, or maybe they stayed with us. And we're up to 86% on that. So I'm not sure what our numbers were before, but I do know that that's an improvement. So we're proud of that. 352 certificates received, and our average wage is $19.43 cents an hour. And on the back, you can see the information for Stigler High School specifically. And we do have 46 Stigler High School students enrolled this year. I believe we have 10 Stigler adults also, the adults in the green as well. And that breaks it down per program. I got to be in a lot of the students interviews since I'm going to be the counselor next year. And so I'm looking forward. We had some great applicants from Stigler High Schools that were employed at that. And then the next page is our Business and Education Councils out at the bottom. And then our WED information, our Workforce and Economic Development information at the top. And we've held 628 short-term classes with 1,246 short-term enrollments for $5,900. Don't know if you have any questions or not, and I don't know if I can answer them. Do if you want to ask. If I don't, I'll ask if I can shoot you an answer.
Just thanks to what you guys do. I feel good things.
Well, we're thankful for Stigler Schools. I was the middle school counselor here for four years and told my husband that I would never leave. And then he's a pastor, so he didn't notice. The Lord did. And so when we came back, I was just really glad I got to go to Stigler.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny. This time, we move on to the cornerstone for grade school audition presented by the Masons.
So I've got you guys a copy of the cornerstone.
Facts.
Time capsule. So I kind of sat down last night and thought I'd write a little context for this because a lot of people don't know what it is. So first and foremost, we'd like to thank the board and members and Dr. Kettles for allowing us to be here to discuss the possibility of laying a cornerstone on a much-needed, long-overdue property. I personally hope this is the first of several capital outlay projects to come for improving the infrastructure of our schools. The foundation is the strength and support of any building. As Masons, we believe the laying of a cornerstone is one of the most crucial pieces to beginning a strong foundation to build a monument. Cornerstones have been the beginning of many great structures to the world, from the building of the great temples to George Washington laying the cornerstone of the White House and the Capitol. George Washington was one of 15 known presidents that belonged to our organization. Cornerstones on these great structures in the past determine the strength and direction of the rest of the building. Today, Masons have thousands of cornerstones throughout this country on schools, churches, and public institutions. These are symbolic of strength and partnership throughout our communities, as well as sturdiness, morality, and truth. Cornerstones can be found standing alone in the middle of nowhere, in the mountains of Colorado, or the historic stockyards in Fort Worth, Texas. Every cornerstone has a symbolic reason for being there. In this country, they carry on tradition that started by our forefathers long ago, many of whom signed the Declaration of Independence, as well as the Constitution. Masons, we have a history of advocating for public institutions and public schools throughout this country and many communities within. Masonic organizations donate millions of dollars each day and hold charitable events throughout America, which also includes supporting educational goals and opportunities for students in many communities. So on the fact sheet, in Oklahoma, we've got over 400 cornerstones approximately. That's information from the grand lads. We don't have the exact number. But some of these things are on, like I said, churches, schools, universities, and public buildings. Popular cornerstones are on the White House, the Capitol Building, Washington Monument, the Smithsonian, and Benetton Hall, and the Constitution Hall. The information on the cornerstone, which is, I guess, what we need to really get to as far as the specs on laying it. A cornerstone is symbolic of laying the northeast corner. However, that can be placed in other areas for visitors' view. The local lodge will assist officials with the location. A cornerstone is 16 inches square and 3.4 inches thick. It should be proportioned to fit into the brick or stonework of the building and have a mortar joint around the stone as a fusion masonry. The main stone will have information and dates from the grand lodge. Companion stone will have the local lodge information. Trustees, committee members, board members, or other names desired by the administration can be put on the stone as well, if so desired. Time capsule, normally there's a time capsule. There's no specific list of contents to be deposited. We'll prepare the copper box. It'll be large enough for the items desired. Whatever you guys desire, some of the things we will put in there will be a small Bible, a current copy of the newspaper, current points from the current year, list of officials from break history of the building. Publicity, there'll be a ceremony event. The grand lodge will come down and do that. We'll put that in the paper. That'll be in coordination with you guys, time and place, et cetera. The stone does not have to be laid at the same time as ceremony. Did a ceremony well before, and that can be laid whenever they do. We'll send out invitations to whoever you guys would like to come to the ceremony. Could be state officials, county officials, so on and so forth. So our contributions to locally here to the school, we did the Teacher Today Award, Student of Today Award, and the Chuck Craswell Memorial Scholarship. So that really concludes everything I have. If you guys have any questions, we can definitely try to answer them.
I'm here with it, so.
Yeah, so that's all I've got on it. I appreciate it.
Word from Master Matt, just for a second.
Sure.
So just so we know, sometimes we get it confused. The Masonic Lodge, what we do is we give back to the community. We raise money throughout the year. We do a lot of fundraisers to help do matching money to give back to our community. Lodge 121 is a great lodge to give back to the community. And this is just another way that we can give back to our community in a project that we believe in. See, and I just want to make sure people, you know, they sometimes get the Masonic Lodge and the shrine confused. And we, our shrine takes care of our burned and orthopedic children, as our Masonic Lodge takes care of our community. And that's one thing that I think is big, is showing that Lodge 121 is ready to give back and willing to give back. And this is just another point that we can do to give back. Appreciate it. Word from Master.
Thank you. You feel bad? Okay. Thank you, guys, very much. This time, we move on to the presentation from Mrs. Aspen Quick and FCC LA sponsor and the students, Ms. Brianna Thornton, standing. Chloe Bush, and Ms. Disha Young. Rest in peace.
Hi, I'm Brianna Thornton. I'm a freshman at Stigler High School.
Oh, I'm Disha Dean. I'm a senior and also a chapter officer. I am vice president of the branch.
I'm Chloe Bush. I'm also a chapter officer. I'm vice president of Public Relations, and I competed in professional presentation.
My name is Kendall Stout. I'm a sophomore, and I'm currently on state ballot for Oklahoma FCC LA.
Today, we are going to present to you our National Leadership Conference of 2024. It will take place from June 28th to July 4th in Seattle, Washington.
Things that we're going to cover today, we're going to cover our number of competitors, our past successes, the cost, the fundraisers that we're going to hold, and the significance of why we should be there.
Our program, eight out of 10 groups are top three in the state. Stigler has the most top-three placings in the state of Oklahoma out of any program. That is 16 possible national qualifiers. Official results will be announced Thursday at state convention. We are also being recognized as a Gold Star Chapter, receiving an award for 100% participation, and have a state officer candidate.
Our past success, in 2022, we had a gold medal level three, silver medal level two, and bronze medal level three. In 2023, we had national runner-up in event management, level two.
This event will take place June 28th through July 4th. We will fly out of Tulsa, Oklahoma. Then we will lay over at MDW and land in Seattle, Washington on the 28th. We will return, we will return the following same pattern on July 4th by 2:00 PM. This is a national contest. SHS will have students competing in interpersonal communications, professional presentation, creed speaking, event management, repurpose and redesign, nutrition and wellness, and entrepreneurship. We also have a potential state officer and multiple national voting delegates. Sorry.
We will be flying southwest out of Tulsa, and that can be around $730 per student. We are staying at the Sheraton Grand Seattle, which is one of the national conference hotels. Our bill is currently $10,570 for six rooms for six nights. This amounts to about $400 per student.
It costs each student $55 to compete. It is an additional $225 to attend the conference. Oklahoma FCC LA charges each competition $110 to represent the state. This includes a backpack, pullover, t-shirt, and travel insurance.
The cost overview, oh, sorry, overview. Our airfares are $730 per person. Hotels are $400 per person. Competition fee is $55 and conference fee is $225. Oklahoma package is $110, and in total, that is $1,520 per student.
Our plans on fundraising for this is we will hold a raffle. And we'll be raffling the following items: 100 pounds of beef, three months of yoga at Heavenly Meditate, and a hydro facial at Glow Spa. Tickets are anywhere from $5 to $10 per ticket. Students are required to sell $500, but are encouraged to continue selling tickets. We will also do a sponsorship. Each student is required to obtain five community sponsorships. Sponsorships can range from 100 to 300, and a sponsor receives a business promotion in return.
Final thoughts is that Stigler is representing our state and Stigler on a national platform. This serves our students through scholarship opportunities, resume builders, and networking opportunities. SHS FCC LA is facing the possibility of a $24,320 bill. This does not include the four chaperones we have lined up. We are prepared to fundraise. However, we would love the support of our school in helping us pay down a portion of our lodging if possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, this time, we move on to approval for minutes from the March 11th, 2024 meeting.
Any changes? Make motion for approval, just for a second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to approve the minutes from the March 11th, 2024 meeting. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. This time, we move on to the approval of encumbrances.
Okay. On the first page, 387, that is a blanket PO for trash liners, paper towels, things like that. We go down to 392 and 393. That is for the PLT Conference this summer, Professional Learning Conference, Tulsa. Next kind of big one is 398. That is for a steering gearbox for one of our buses. PO 399 through 407, our grade school bulk order supplies for next year. 414 are for the speech, the rooms for the state speech contest, which is later this week. On the next page, we have 417, that is early childhood materials paper out of RSA. 419, 420, and 421 are all RSA subscriptions, things they're paying out of the Reading Sufficiency Act. 422 is another blanket PO for uniforms, which is our uniforms, rugs, and all that. And 423 is for American industrial suppliers, our torch gloves, and our gas for our welders. The next page, we have 70203, that's payroll encumbrance for our middle school custodian. And 70204 is for the first grade teacher for the remainder of the school. The next page, 80140 is for RSA stipends. State is paying a portion, paying each teacher a stipend that goes to the letter string, and that counts for that. And our next one is our child attrition, and that is a blanket PO for our after-school meal package. Those are our encumbrances for this one.
Make motion for approval, Kevin.
Second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to approve the encumbrances as listed. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. This time, we move on to other financial reports.
Okay. Okay, well, look, comparing to last year, we're up, you know, kind of our normal in our payroll. And then we're also up $34,000 from last year on our bills. Majority of that is, you know, we got our bus back, our wrapped mini bus back. So that was $21,020. And then we replaced the big air unit here for about $13,000. So that's what took this pretty high compared to last year. It's kind of like we talked about, you know, way down here, it's just when the, you know, kind of when the things break down, you can't really just take it. So it's going to vary through the year, but overall, we're still in good shape. Look on the next page, currently, our general fund is at 4.29 million. So we're real healthy in there. We've got some big bills coming up, but right now, we're doing pretty good. Building fund, it's going to vary a little bit with our paying, each month we pay our bill for the grade school, and then we get reimbursed, but it's usually a month or two behind. So it's going to kind of go up and down. So that's going well. Child attrition fund, still doing well, $163,000. So overall, we're doing pretty good, and I think we're real healthy for this time of year. And any questions? That is the other financial reports.
This time, Board of Education invited to have the comment at this point, a regular meeting. A comments concerning agenda items in accordance with policy E-B-E-D-R. No one present for that. Information items, a superintendent report.
Okay, remember last month, we talked about the speech team. We're competing regionals. They won out of the regional championship, and they will compete later this week in the state competition. So we're very excited for them. Look forward to seeing them compete. I'm sure they'll do well. And it's at Rose State in Midwest City. Now, Mike, back here, he's here. But if I say something wrong, tell them.
Okay.
This is kind of an update on the grade school. Last time we talked, we were waiting on the rebar for the grade school. And we now have that ready and are finalizing the last thing is our anchor bolts. And whether it's best to wait to pour the footings now and put the bolts, or wait for the footings, put the bolts in the concrete, or then drill and epoxy later. So that's kind of where we're at right now.
Yes, sir.
Kind of waiting on those. We expect those here in the next couple of weeks.
Yes, sir.
So we're looking forward to get that going. The metal building is scheduled to be here on June 3rd, so we want to try and get all our concrete work completed by then. Also, on the 20th, we're getting some rebids to fully enclose the corridor and trying to get a definite cost on that. So my plan is to have that cost in our May agenda to kind of decide a way that we can improve enclosing the corridor. We really hope we can. Let's kind of see what the costs come up. But it'd be nice to go from one end of the building all the way to the other, never go outside, go cafeteria, never go outside. So we're really hoping we can do that. We took some of the storefront glazing, some of the windows off. That original bid was about $80,000, just all these windows. We took some of those out. The hallway will be well lit, so we think that'll decrease our cost. I really think we can do that. We'll kind of wait and see what our bids are. And last, this year is rapidly winding down. Our seniors will graduate and school will be out before our next board meeting. So it's coming quick. We have a lot going on the last few weeks, and I do want to recognize our valedictorians and salutatorians. Our valedictorians are Channing Shelton and Daryl White. And our salutatorians are Mackenzie Hall, Coleen, and Mia Smith. So we're very proud of them, what they've put in, and just real proud of them. We have a good bunch of kids. And that is the superintendent's report.
It's time to move on to the action topic. Action topic A, consideration of Masonic cornerstone installed by the grand lodge on the northeast corner of the new grade school classroom addition.
Okay, this would allow the cornerstone that they presented earlier to be installed in the building, you know, as they talked about earlier.
I make a motion. We approve the Masonic cornerstone installation by the grand lodge on the northeast corner of the new grade school classroom addition.
I'll second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer to approve the Masonic cornerstone installation by the grand lodge on the northeast corner of the new grade school classroom addition. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic B, consideration of approval of Aspen Quick FCC LA sponsor taking students to the FCC LA National Leadership Conference in Seattle, Washington on June 28th, 2024, and returning on July the 4th, 2024. Students will be transported by school vehicle to Tulsa Airport to board flight to the convention. FCC LA is also requesting approval of additional fundraisers to help offset the expenses of this trip.
And this would allow them to go to Seattle and also approve the additional fundraiser to help offset expenses.
Make motion to approve action topic B as listed.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to approve FCC LA sponsor Aspen Quick to take students to the FCC LA National Leadership Conference in Seattle, Washington on June 28th, 2024, and returning on June, July the 4th, 2024. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic C, consideration of resolution for schools and library universal services E-rate for the 2024-2025. The resolution authorizes filing of the Form 471 applications for funding year 2024-25 and the payment of the applicant's share upon approval of funding and receipt of services.
Okay, this resolution will let us file our Form 71, and if we are funded, we agree to pay our share of the total cost. And it kind of depends on your free reduced rate lunch, things like that. But basically, the universal service program will pay 80% of our cost for the category one, which is our internet and our wide-area network. And so what this says is we will pay our 20%. Now, for category one, I don't know if you noticed in your phone bill, but you'll see an OUSF cost in all your phone bill. And that is, that's the Oklahoma Universal Service Fund, and that will actually pay our 20%. So really, for category one, which is internet access and our wide-area network, really, we're not out of any money. But this allows us to file our 471 and get that. Category two is more of the switches, access points, kind of internal stuff within the building. And that, where you also, 80% is covered in that, and we have to pay. Stigler Schools will pay the 20% of that. So what this...
20% of the $90,000, is that it?
Yes, we pay with 20% of that. We get a budget based on our number of kids, and then the total budget, basically, they're going to give us 80% of that. So our share would be, out of that 90, would be about $18,000. And that's going to get us switches, racks, access points, which are kind of like, you know, these where the Wi-Fi works, and also new drops and all that. This is, this is, and all the network equipment also for the new construction of the grade school. This is all here. We've got to do it kind of early, but yeah, basically, it's going to pay for all of our internal components of the new building. So I would recommend we approve this.
Make a motion to approve E-rate for the 24-25 school year, second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to approve the E-rate for the 24-25 school year. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic D, consideration of temporary appropriations for the 24-25 school year.
Okay, this is something we have to do every year before July by law. We do it kind of early to get everything done. But the temporary appropriations are based on current year figures and are completed before the estimate of needs. So, you know, kind of basically, this is our preliminary estimate of needs. It gives us legal authority to spend before the estimate of needs is approved in September.
Make a motion to approve temporary appropriations for the 24-25 school year.
I'll second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer to approve the temporary appropriations for the 24-25 school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic E, consideration of approval of statutory waiver deregulation co-op agreement to serve fewer than 10 students in Stigler High School alternative education for three years.
Okay, this waiver, we have to do a waiver every three years that goes for the state board. If we ever drop below 10 students in our alternative school program, we would have to co-op with another district. And so if we do this waiver, we would not need to co-op with a district if we drop below 10. I would recommend we approve this. And we want to keep our kids here without having to bus them somewhere else. We vary. We can go above 10 most of the time, but then we can go below 10. So this way, it allows us to keep them at Stigler the whole time.
Make a motion to approve the statutory waiver deregulation co-op agreement to serve fewer than 10 students in Stigler High School alternative education for three years.
I'll second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to approve the statutory waiver deregulation co-op agreement to serve fewer than 10 students in Stigler High School alternative education for three years. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic F, consideration of approval of statutory waiver deregulation application for district-wide library media services for three years.
Okay, this is another waiver that we have done the past three years. This allows us to use paraprofessionals rather than a certified librarian in our site libraries. Now, you know, we have enough emergency teachers. If we have a certified person, it's kind of hard to put them in the library if we have paraprofessionals that are trained to do, and they do a great job. They really do. We want to continue this, and so I would recommend approving this waiver.
Make a motion to approve the statutory waiver dereg- Make a motion to approve the statutory waiver deregulation application for the district-wide library media services for three years.
I'll second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer to approve the statutory waiver deregulation application for district-wide library media services for three years. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic G, consideration of approval of proposed budget of opioid abatement grant awards application.
Okay, this year, you know, Oklahoma got the opioid settlement, and the Attorney General and Opioid Abatement Board put out a chance to apply for, it's pretty specific what you can do. We've got some, basically, some opioid use education curriculums, training for our teachers, training for our SRO, and some cameras to monitor, hard-to-monitor areas in the high school and the middle school. But basically, our school can get up to $35,000 if we're approved. That's kind of our maximum amount per year. So we're, this first year, we're kind of spending curriculum and some basics that'll carry over. Eventually, we'd like to get a person in here that kind of can do that, but we're not sure how long. There's a lot of money, but it's just up in the air. It's for one year right now, it'd be hard to get somebody. So we're going to start with some stuff like curriculum and cameras and some training for our current staff. And, uh, before we can submit our application, we have to have board approval on the budget. So that's what we're asking for today.
Make a motion to approve the proposed budget of opioid abatement grant awards application.
I'll second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to approve the proposed budget of opioid, opioid abatement grant awards application. Grant, uh, Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic H, consideration of approval of summer school classes for our multi-handicapped students, physical, occupational, speech therapy for grade school, middle school, and high school summer programs, 2024.
Okay, this is for all of our summer programs for each site, and it includes our special education summer programs as well. As well, it just allows us to basically have our summer school. So I would highly recommend we approve this.
Make a motion that we approve the summer school classes for our multi-handicapped students, physical, occupational, speech therapy, grade school, middle school, and high school summer, summer 2024 programs.
I'll second.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Kenny to approve the summer school classes for our multi-handicapped students, physical, occupational, speech therapy for the grade school, middle school, high school, summer 2024 programs. Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic I, consideration of approval of bid quotes for school vehicle.
Hey, we received bids from Dunford, Williams Chevrolet, and Dunn Country Chevrolet on multi-passenger school vehicles. Um, if you look through the bids, our lowest bid was, uh, the Expedition XLT for 56978. Uh, that is our lowest bid. The only issue with that bid is that, uh, vehicle estimate delivery July and August. But we talked with our auditors, and we can get it, we can hold that in reserve. We just can't close out our fiscal year, but we don't close it out until at least August, September anyway. So I think as long as we can get it in July or August, I think we're fine with that. Gary, does that sound right to you? We talked a math today. He's like July or August.
That was a question?
That sounds about right.
That's what he says, is kind of, we think that.
July or August.
Yeah. We, I mean, we can do that.
Make a motion to approve Dunford's bid for the, uh, vehicle 2024 Expedition XLT for 56978. Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to approve the bid from Dunford for $56,978 for the 2024 Expedition XLT, um, for the school vehicle. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Okay, this time, we move on to executive session. A proposed executive session to discuss an act upon the bid, following business pursuant to 25 Oklahoma Statute 307B, one of the open meeting act. Number one, discussion of continued employment or non-reemployment of career status certified teachers, probationary certified teachers, and non-emergency full and part-time temporary teachers for the 24-25 school year. Number two, discussion of employment of personnel for the 2024 summer school programs. Number three, discussion of resignation of Colby Bryant, grade school custodian effective March 15, 2024. Number four, discussion of resignation of Bailey Bates, middle school counselor, effective end of '23-24 school year. Number five, discussion of resignation of Angie City High School English teacher, head cheerleading coach, effective end of '23-24 school year. Number six, uh, uh, discussion of resignation of Christie Bray, middle school cook, effective April 12, 2024. Number seven, discussion of resignation of Shannon Reese, kindergarten teacher assistant, effective May 15, 2024. Number eight, discussion of resignation of Don Holt, middle school, high school, social studies teacher, effective immediately. Number nine, discussion of employment of grade school custodian for the remainder of the '23-24 school year. Number 10, discussion of employment of agriculture, rural education teacher for the 24-25 school year. And number 11, discussion of employment of high school math teacher for the 24-25 school year.
Make a motion to convene an executive session. Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David at 6:05 P.M. to convene an executive discussion.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Kenny?
Open session, yes. Second.
Motion made by Kenny, uh, seconded by David to turn the board to open session at 6:30, 6:00 P.M. Members present were David Huggins, Kenny Whitson, Jennifer Turner, Susan White, and Superintendent Dr. Tom Kells was also present. No motions nor votes were taken.
Make a motion that we continue employment of career status certified teachers, probationary certified teachers, and non-emergency full and part-time temporary teachers for the 24-25 school year as listed on attachment. Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to continue employment of our career status certified teachers, uh, probationary certified teachers, and non-emergency full and part-time temporary teachers for the 2024 school year as listed on attachment. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to approve the employment of personnel for the 24 summer school programs as listed.
Second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer to approve the employment of the personnel for the 2024 summer school programs as listed. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. I make a motion that we accept the resignation of Colby Bryant, grade school custodian, effective March 15, 2024.
Second.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Kenny to accept the resignation of Colby Bryant, grade school custodian, effective March 15, 2024. Jennifer?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Bailey Bates, middle school counselor, effective end of '23-24 school year. Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to accept the resignation of Bailey Bates, middle school counselor, effective end of '23-24 school year. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Angie City High School English teacher, head cheerleading coach, effective the end of '23-24 school year.
I'll second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer to accept the resignation of Angie City High School English teacher, head cheerleading coach, effective end of '23-24 school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. I make a motion that we accept the resignation of Christie Bray, middle school cook, effective April 12, 2024.
I'll second.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Kenny to accept the resignation of Christie Bray, middle school cook, effective April 12, 2024. Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Shannon Reviss, kindergarten teacher assistant, effective May 15, 2024.
I'll second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to accept the resignation of Shannon Reviss, kindergarten teacher assistant, effective May 15, 2024. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. I make a motion that we accept the resignation of Don Holt, middle school, high school, social studies teacher, effective immediately.
I'll second.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by David to accept the resignation of Don Holt, middle school, high school, social studies teacher, effective immediately. Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. I make a motion that we employ Jamie Plantch for the grade school custodian for the remainder of the '23-24 school year.
Second.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Kenny. Motion made by Kenny to employ Jamie Plantch for grade school custodian for the remainder of the '23-24 school year. Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. I make a motion that we employ Emily Beville for the agricultural, agriculture education teacher for the 24-25 school year.
Second.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by David to employ Emily Beville of, um, for agriculture education teacher for the 24-25 school year. Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to approve the employment of Christy Young as high school math teacher for the 24-25 school year. Sorry.
I'll second. The motion made, motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer to employ Christy Young, um, high school math teacher for the 24-25 school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the election of the school board. Officers, Susan White President, Dave Huggins Vice President, Kenny Whitson Clerk, Deputy Clerk Jennifer Turner, and Member Brett Horn. Second.
Kenny? Second. Motion made by David, seconded by Kenny to accept the board officers as listed. Susan White President, David Huggins Vice President, Kenny Whitson Clerk, Jennifer Turner, Deputy Clerk, and Member Brett Horn. David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Okay, any new business?
No new business.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer at 6:41 P.M. to adjourn. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Next regular meeting starts at 10:00, 2024.